All right, I think we can get rolling. There were two more people on the attendees list, but they can always pick up anything they missed in these first few minutes on our recording that will post to YouTube later if they miss anything and they join us later. So getting into it. On that first note, this is being recorded. This is all going to be posted on YouTube, on AIA Cincinnati's channel. So anything can be accessed later with that. We'll also post a link to the slide deck, so you can post that as host, see that as well. So today, we're going to be covering practice management for the ARES. The first test in the list. This is our second session. If you missed the first one, it was a general intro to everything about the ARE. We did a light touch on every one of the divisions, general overview of NCARB, AREE, and general policies, and how to test, how to schedule, and basic tips and things on that. So that is currently active on that YouTube channel, if you'd like to see that. And bit of introductions. I am Brian Olagus. I'm an architect here at SHP. We're off third in Plum. I can see the Bengals Stadium out my window right now. I've been at SHP for a little over eight years. I got licensed in 2019 with AREE 5.0, shortly after I graduated from Miami. Since I've been doing a couple other certifications to get NCARB certified. I'm also licensed in Kentucky. And I'm an CARB licensing advisor as well.
I'm John Edwards. I work at RWA Architects. I'm a, got licensed in 2020, and went to Illinois for undergrad and then Cincinnati for graduate. I've been at RWA for, it's going on seven years in June. So yeah, licensed in Ohio.
And you'll see on the right here, these are a lot of the major links that we'll be referencing today. And again, I'll share this slide deck if you need to access that, or if you have any questions, we can post some of that stuff to the chat here as well, if you need to look at it sooner rather than later. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to, for you all to be able to introduce yourselves. We'll be doing this as more of a discussion. We're going to be going through some practice questions and things, and we'd really like to see some engagement from you all. So just as a start, take a minute or two. Tell us about yourself. Jacob, if you want to start? Sorry, we can't, I can't hear you. I don't know if anyone else can.
Me now?
Yes, yes, we got you.
I keep switching to a speaker.
Yeah, you're all right.
My name's Jacob, and currently I'm working at Champlin Architecture. I went to Ball State for my B Arc. And starting this process now.
Yeah. I very nearly went to Ball State, but decided on Miami instead. All right, Eric, how about you?
Hey, good morning. Yeah, Eric Byth. I work at GBBN. I've been there for a little over a year now. I worked at Plant Architecture Design for many years before that. And yeah, went to UC for undergrad, Cincinnati, and University of Utah undergrad school.
Okay. And have you, are you just now starting on these tests as well?
Yeah, this is, this is my first test scheduled for March 11th.
Awesome. Yeah, yeah. Good, good to hear that you got it scheduled. That's, that's one of the hardest steps is to just get that on the calendar. All right, Anna, how about you? Sorry, I think you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name's Anna Harden. I'm from Wasbistown, Kentucky, and I came to Cincinnati for the University of Cincinnati. I have my Bachelor's of Architecture and my Master's, both from UC. And I just graduated last spring. And I started working at Drawing Department this past August. And now I'm starting to study, probably looking to take this test soon, so.
Awesome.
Great.
Afif, if I said that correctly, how about you? Nothing from him yet. All right, we can, we can keep moving. Afif, if you, if you want to chime in, let us know. So going forward, I wanted to start with a couple of updates from NCARB that are new as of this past week that, you know, kind of racked a couple of the things that we said in our last session. NCARB no longer, or they are actively retiring the rolling clock policy. So previously, there was a five-year time period in which you needed to take these exams. As of a few days ago, they released this announcement. There was a vote in January. This is going into effect. I think this one is actually just going immediately into effect, or they're working through it at least. Some people had taken AREE 4.0 division exams that may have fallen off that rolling clock. And basically what they're saying with this new policy is that your scores will be valid as long as you took your test in the current or previous version of the AREE. So if someone did take tests in AREE 4.0 and AREE 5.0 with 5.0 as the current version, then all of those scores are valid. Now, in the future, if they bump this up to an AREE 6.0, any scores made in that 4.0 version will fall off and will no longer be considered valid. I would not consider that a huge concern at the moment. It sounds like you all are just starting, so we're going with 5.0. And there is no indication or regular schedule on when they update these things. The jump to 5.0 was a very big deal that happened after, I, it was, it was a string of cheating and things that happened that they had to revamp the entire testing system. So that was a big deal. I don't see them updating to 6.0 anytime soon, much less 7.0, that would fall off the 5.0 scores. So the goal of this was to make it more equitable, more accessible for women and minority groups that were adversely affected by the rolling clock condition, given lifestyle changes and all sorts of things that were difficult to deal with, with that rolling clock condition. So it is important to note that some jurisdictions still maintain that rolling clock policy that is, I think NCARB is, we're actively working with them to make sure they update that. But as it stands right now, they, they still have their own individual policies that does not affect Ohio. It does affect Kentucky for just our near neighbor. And then the other news was that NCARB and ARB, which is the United Kingdom's Architecture Registration Board, came to reciprocity agreements. So once you get your license and potentially your NCARB certificate, it may actually be much easier for you to get licensed in the United Kingdom as well, if you want to do international work. So that's just a little note from cooperating governments there, so. For today, we're just going to hit a big overview of practice management and everything we can with that division. We're going to be going through a number of practice questions in the four groups that NCARB splits this test into. That's business operations, finance risk and development of practice, practice-wide delivery of services, and practice methodologies. And John, do you want to go through the overview?
Yeah, so just a quick overview of this exam as a whole. There's 65 questions total, and it's two hour 40 minutes, the test length, and yeah, there's, it's divided into four sections, and they're all, they all count as a different percentage of the exam. Some are weighted a little more heavily than others, such as for this one, they're mostly all pretty even, I feel like, about, close to about 25%.
And it's important to note that they have these ranges because there are different versions of each exam. So if, if for some reason you, you do fail and go back in, you're not going to have the same exact exam. There is some variation to them, and so that's why you get a little bit of a range in those percentages.
And you do get, yeah, an optional break that you can take at any point during the exam.
And in our first session, a couple of weeks ago, we did talk a little bit about the structure of those and how to strategize with your break and organizing the questions and using the software and such.
Yeah, so here's a quick list of references that are really important for this exam in particular, highlighted in the, the blue. So I would say that the Architect's Handbook of Professional Practice would be the main, like, book resource that we else, yeah.
I have the 14th edition in our office. I think they're currently referencing the 15th edition, but
Yeah, 15th.
Yeah.
So that's available in our, the AIA Cincinnati Library.
Also available at the Cincinnati Public Library as well.
Yeah, there's several chapters in the book, and also wanted to, again, show you a little bit later on. There's a, like a study guide particularly for this book that kind of walks you through each of the sections and like which chapters are most relevant. We can go through that later.
Yeah, and I would say I think most questions would reference that in some way. I think it is the primary resource for this test.
And then there's a, yeah, yeah, there's a few more, like the, there's the AIA Code of Ethics, which is available on their website, and then NCARB's Model Rules of Conduct, which also those cover like ethics of practice and, you know, like avoiding conflict of interest, things like that. So I, those would be good resources to study as well.
And those are both five to eight-page PDFs. They're, they're easy things to reference and pick up.
And there's some contracts for, especially for this one, the Owner Architect Contract B101. And then the Consultant Contract. So that'd be like for engineers, architect contract, whoever you'd be working with to complete a project. And the A201, General Conditions of the Contract, which also lists some of the contractor's responsibilities, as well as the architect's. And there's also, there's these Shift Harden lectures. I don't know if you have heard of those yet. It's audio where there's a professor that goes over each of these contracts and explains them per section. And I would really recommend listening to those if you
Yeah, he, he is, he's the professional practice professor at the University of Illinois Chicago. And so these are direct audio files from his class that he teaches. And he will go through each of these contracts line by line. It's, what's, what's funny is sometimes he'll even go through a portion of the contract and say, yeah, that's, that's not defensible. But AIA makes you put it in there kind of thing. But so he's, he's very honest about how these contracts work. He, he is a construction lawyer. He's not an architect interpreting these contracts. This is his job. And so he's, it's very, very helpful stuff. We have, later on, we'll, we'll reference a couple things that AIA Cincinnati offers. We have a spreadsheet with a lot of these references listed out and some recommendations and resources. This, what we're seeing here is directly out of the NCARB Guidelines Reference Matrix per exam. And so we've built a spreadsheet kind of based on this with our thoughts and opinions on how useful these things are, and then links to a lot of these resources. Yes, Eric, these, there is a link available to these contracts in there. I will say they used to be a lot easier to access. AIA started a new system where it's all cloud-based. Let me go to this real quick if I can. And you can access each of these contracts for free in a sample on their page. And let's see. So here's A201. We can go to that. First off, we want, 2017 is the most recent one. They do that every 10 years. So this is, this is the full sample that you have right here. You can actively flip through every sheet of this. Unfortunately, they no longer allow you to download this. This used to be downloadable as a PDF. I know I was able to, you know, I printed it off. I had it in hand highlighting things as I was listening to those, those lectures and such. So that was very helpful. If this is what we link to and what NCARB and AIA officially reference now, but we do still have PDF versions. If you'd like to email us after this, we can send you those. I, I don't think we have that digitally hosted anywhere yet, but we'll, we'll get them to you if you want to send us a message.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
John, if you want to talk a little bit more on this one, I can open that up.
Sure. So yeah, this is the PDF I was referencing earlier that is like a guideline for the Handbook of Professional Practice, where it splits, like, it goes with each AREE Division. You're like, it goes by each objective here. You can see Chapter 5, Organization Development, and then kind of gives you an idea of which would be, which pages and chapters would be most, most relevant to study. So I think that would be a good starting point. As you're navigating that, that book, because there's, it is really big. And then these are the links to those PDFs with the AIA Code of Ethics. It has all these canons, they're called, and it talks about like architects' responsibilities for the profession, to colleagues, to
To the public, yeah. Says, things like, don't, don't take gifts from your clients and things for work. You need to be paid professionally. Obligation to the public, to the client. Yeah. Again, this is just a five-page thing, can review that in an hour, one afternoon. Same with the NCARB Rules of Conduct.
It's really, yeah. Rules to follow as architects.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, case studies, that's I don't know, have any of you taken the, like, the CARB demo exam? Then you'll probably, yeah, notice, you'll know about the case studies. I just wanted to mention like a few tips I found helpful when I was taking these exams, when they, they had those PDF resources for you to use during the case studies. The Bookmark tab is really helpful, just to quickly navigate to a section that you'll find relevant to the questions, or using the search function to look for a keyword. And then also on like calculation questions, I think you'll find using the number keypad on the keyboard is going to be a lot faster than like clicking
Clicking through the calculator.
On the actual, yeah, calculators. It's a time saver to keep in mind.
Yeah, and here we've noticed, noted specifically a few of the references that you might find on that case study question for practice management. So those contracts are likely to be part of that, and they're usually not going to be the full thing. There'll be excerpts that are important to the questions in some way, which helps with later exams that might have like code excerpts or something that you don't have to filter through everything. But it might be RFPs, financial statements, labor reports, resumes that you'll have to evaluate and apply to the questions. A note about the case studies, we cover this a little bit more in our first session. And working with these and your break period. So if you're not familiar, when you take your break during your exam, any question that you have answered or seen will no longer be available to you when you come back from that break. They, they lock those questions down. And this was, this was part of a shift when they offered online testing and stuff. So that is consistent whether you're online or in person. When you come back from the break, you will not be able to access previous questions. Now, so one way to get around this a little bit for some resources that I know when I, I tested before this, and it was very important to be able to use the resources in these case studies across the rest of the exam. So say, with this case study might have your A201 contract as a reference. There may be a multiple choice question somewhere else in the test that references that as well. And now granted, you don't need that as a reference to answer that question, but it can certainly be helpful. Now, say if a case study has 10 questions, and you answer five of those and go take a break, you come back from that break, those five are gone, but the other five in that case study are still available, and you can still access those resources. So in some cases, some people will recommend, you know, maybe trying to do the case studies early in the test rather than last, familiarize yourself with those resources. And potentially as you get through the case study, say it's 10 questions, only get through eight or nine of those questions. Leave one more, so that you can come back to that later and keep those resources available to you. It's, it's a little bit of a workaround, and it's a bit frustrating at times, but if those resources can be valuable through the rest of the exam, and so that's one way to still have access to them, even if you do take a break. That being said, this is one of the shortest exams of the six, and so you, you may not need a break, but it's always available to you.
Eric, you had a question about the calculation questions?
It's a bit in the weeds maybe, but I, in practice exams in the past thus far, I have gotten some of the calculation questions wrong due to rounding errors. And, you know, I was like, when the answer was in the tens of thousands, I was 20 off and I got it wrong. What is the way that the, the test is set up in terms of rounding?
Yes, so
On the way or just the final answer?
So they will, important things to note with those questions is that, one, they will always give you a unit that you'll have to have the question in. They will yes, there are some ranges of rounding depending on how you approach it. But in some cases, like if it's, if it's in reference to code, you should know that you always round up if it's like in reference to like an occupant or life safety. Like you always go worst-case scenario in that case, even if it's point one, like you, you, you take the safest condition. If it's like a structural kind of question that can have, yeah, like four decimal points, pass that route, that whole number. NCARB does allow a range of how you answer that question. It's not an exact answer is the only answer. So even if you do have some slight, even if you have, you know, scientific calculator that you have the exact values through every point of that question, you could also round through each stage of that question reasonably. And it should be able to be an acceptable answer as well to a certain point. I wouldn't say round a whole number. If you do two decimal points, I think that is more than enough kind of thing. It's, it's hard to say exactly what that range is. It, it's completely dependent on question by question kind of thing, but
Cool. Yeah, it's mostly been in fee-related questions. And that, yeah, for whatever reason. Okay, so it sounds like either way, rounding as you go or rounding at the end, you should
You, it, it should work well enough. So this has been through the, the practice exams?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We can get into it a little bit deeper with some of those as we come, come across a couple of questions. Hi, Paul. How are you doing? A little bit of a note that we also touched about earlier. Oh, there you go. NCARB has two different kinds of question styles that it, the cognitive levels that it tries to hit. Understand and apply and analyze, evaluate. Two other cognitive levels, for example, are remember and create. Essentially, NCARB is, they, they make a point not to say that those are not available in those, these exams. They will not ask you to recall from memory specific details, and they will not ask you to design on the spot and create something. So these are the main styles of questions that they have where it's understanding a concept and understanding the resources given to you, and then applying that concept to the question versus analyze, evaluate, analyze materials and items that they give you, like the case studies might give you resources and evaluate those and apply that to the question.
Do you have a question, Afif?
Oh, sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry about your, just a quick, yeah, I'm, my name is Afif Aluz, and I'm, I work with the Modi Nolan Architects. I've been working with Modi Nolan for 16 years. I'm actually registered, I'm originally from Tunisia and I'm registered in Tunisia, but I'm, you know, trying to get my registration in the US, and I'm also a lead AP. So one thing that I was going to say is I was taking a practice exam last week for the PCM. I took a break, left to take a break, and I opened a question. I came back and the question is gone. So even for the practice, you know, they'll try to do the same thing as you're taking a real test. The same thing we, you know, I, I saw a question about, the answer was like point nine, and whether, whether you, your answer is 0.9 or just point nine, I think they want you to, to, to do the point nine rather than 0.99, because the NCARB will not take the zero. So it's just like, you know, more rules that we have to follow, but it is what it is, so.
Interesting. Yeah, I feel like that should obviously be in a range of acceptable answers.
You would think, but you, you know, it was the, actually, same thing, practice test.
Okay. I'll, that was for the practice management practice test?
PCM, yeah.
PCM, yeah. Okay, I might, I have PDF versions of those tests at least. I might try to dig into that a little bit and try to find those.
If you can find out, please let me know, because
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, hey, we can't actually access those practice exams because you all access them through your NCARB login account and everything. I can get I can get PDF versions of it, but since I've completed my exams, I actually don't have access to the actual software anymore. It's it's a little frustrating uh as I'm trying to, you know, help people through them. But I I have PDF versions with all the answers and everything, so if you have detailed questions about a specific question in those practice exams. Or if there's an issue with an answer to one of them, we can work through that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can help out. Going through each section of the exam now, a little bit more in depth. So I'll start out with the first one, business operations, um this section really covers. Ends and ounce of like, you know, like knowing how to. Manage staffing, how to assign employees to projects and. Based on like their workload or what experiences they have. And also thinking about like just how to run a business in general ethics, some are like. Some of those PDS we touched on earlier, like the AIA code of ethics and then the in-car rules of conduct. That would be applicable to this type of section. And also things about like insurance and. Yeah. That's one, and then also knowing like when to apply the, well. Just the definition of the architect standard of care in general, um that's in the. Owner architect contract, that's talks about how architect. Would perform at services consistent with other practicing architects. In a similar situation, similar jurisdiction and performing at services as expeditiously as possible. Uh also. Think like general concept is knowing like ways like architects where. One of our main responsibilities is to protect the health, safety and welfare of the public. So just keeping that in mind as you're studying. And then, yeah, it's just well from, yeah, V one O one, the owner architect agreement. So that's the standard of care right there.
Professional skill and care.
Yeah, now like, you know, it's. A standard, it's not like, you know, you're saying you're providing like cutting edge or. Excellent or any of those types of words that would put you above. Like would hold you to a higher standard than everyone else, it's just kind of risky to say in that manner, so. Yeah, uh I think we can, let's maybe do a sample question now, so go ahead and read this um. Our, this is from the handbook, an architecture firm has been selected to design a four-story apartment complex. In a neighboring jurisdiction and the office staffing leader is in the process of assigning dedicated architecture staff to the project. Uh click on the name of the employee in the staff above who's not who's the most appropriate to. Be the project architect and responsible for the design of the apartment complex.
So we'll we'll give you all a a couple minutes to look over this, uh feel free to throw some answers in the chat. If you have any questions, um go ahead and speak up and we'll run through this. This specific specifically as it shows up on the exam would be a sort of point and click answer. There's an air a box in this that you're able to click within that is considered a correct answer. Let us know if you have any questions and raise your hand if you'd like to give the answer. Yeah, Eric, we can follow up with your question following this. Afif, you wanna go ahead and uh? Give an answer?
I think I'm gonna go with the architect E employee, yeah, architect.
I I believe that one is correct, so again, this is this blue box here. That would be its sort of area that you would need to click within to get a correct answer there, and so. Um a little bit of the reasoning behind that is that, so again, they'll. They told us here that this is directly out of the handbook professional practice that we. We've shown earlier as a reference uh for how to manage that, and so. We're looking at the, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we're we're looking at the firms of staff availability, their experience and their credentials across the board and. We're trying to verify that the roles and responsibilities of the position. Uh match with an employee with the project requirements, uh so.
I think in this case, like his his billable or his or her billable hours are. Pretty low, like he's only twen- twenty-five percent, and then also.
Yeah, I, yeah.
They have experience in that type of building.
With residential and condos and hotels, yeah.
Yeah, I always on these types of questions, I actually go with the utilization rate, it's only twenty-five percent, so he's available. Uh and to and then uh and then experience.
Hmm, and so uh leading into your question a little bit, Eric, with that, so are you uh? Just looking for clarification on understanding utilization rate?
Um, a little bit, yeah, I I guess understanding that it is maybe a metric of availability is helpful. Um rather than a metric of capability, um or it like I think. I've also bumped into information about, you know, kind of running down the typical hierarchy of a firm and. The typical utilization rates, uh or maybe I'm thinking of a different term there, but um. It like, you know, a principal typically has a lower utilization rate where they're, you know, they're. They have fewer billable hours, um and so I guess that's that's kind of where I'm getting hung up. Um but it sounds like utilization rate is more in these questions, it's more a metric of availability. A lower utilization rate means an employee is more appropriate because they are more available, is that correct?
Yeah, I I think everything that you're saying is is pretty on point, and so just a a quick clarification of utilization rate. So say if you have, uh they're usually based off of a typical forty-hour work week and say. Eight of your hours through that week are overhead or marketing or working on RFPs. Stuff that isn't billable, then, you know, it's only thirty-two of your forty hours are. Billable hours, and so your utilization rate would be eighty percent.
Eighty percent, yeah.
Um so in your note about, you know, principals and owners, yeah, typically their utilization rates are lower, they're um. They're far focusing on, you know, networking for the company, marketing, business development, finance. Whatnot and maintaining rela- relationships, and so, yeah, they're likely not on as many like billable project hours. So say in the if we modified this question a little bit and say we have. Say employee E and employee A had the same work experience. Uh and even the same utilization rate, say they were both at forty-five percent. Uh so in this one already has, you know, hotels, and so that's that's kind of on par with that. Now, while the owner has more experience. I think we would take their posit- their title into consideration there, you're gonna, you're gonna be putting the. The owner in more of a position to run the company and less about production work. And so even if there were, these are the same numbers all the way across, but the title was slightly different. I would still answer with the uh employee E as the architect for the sort of production work that needs to go into that. So I think that's that's a little bit of understanding those uh the differences in the roles. Um probably, probably a similar note with project manager.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, of course, I think that was a great question. All right, we got another sample question here, uh this one is a check all that apply, or I'm sorry, I. Check all that apply with the instruction that you have three of them to check.
So you know, which the following types of insurance policies help protect an architectural firm?
And again, feel free to take a couple of minutes, uh raise your hand when you feel like you have an answer or if you have any questions. Eric, to quickly answer your question, uh he's he asked, is the is the handbook professional practice best resource to? Look at for a question like this, yes, it looks like uh. Under chapter nine in the handbook is risk management and it covers insurance coverage under there.
Also, you know, chapter sixteen in the version fifteen, the fifteenth edition.
Right.
It's about that, so yet. Um, does anyone wanna give a shout at this question?
All right, I guess I'll give it a shot, um would it be commercial general liability insurance, professional liability? And workers' compensation?
Yep, that's.
I believe so, yeah. So a a couple of notes here, I believe um. The builder's risk insurance is typically carried by the owner or contractor, so that one necessarily be related to the architect. And then the uh, the health and life insurance is related to the employee and uh the business insurance. Uh not not so much as the the insurance for the firm. So, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I think when I was reading this question, I kind of took a look at it's. It well, like all of these are insurance policies, like the ones that help protect architectural firm itself. Are ones, yeah, related to like risk, like, for example, professional liability. That's like the airs and emissions insurance, so it helps protect the firm against. Like any potential like mistakes that they make in like drawings. Things like that. Like workers' comp that would be to help protect. Their employees or any and else who might, you know, potentially get injured or. And then helps protect like the the health of the firm.
Yeah, and this, this is a fairly simply worded question, but you know, you might have. A multi-sentence question that has a lot of information built into that question, you need to filter through it a little bit to find those keywords. Of what the question is actually asking for, uh in this case, your keywords would be to protect an architectural firm. So you're not necessarily looking for insurance that protects the employees, protects the owner, protects the contractor, you're looking for what protects the firm. So just something to use uh the. Strike through and highlight tools that you might have available for you in the exam software, you can use that on these. Que- on the question text so to help organize your thoughts a bit, so if there's a relevant information in there. That is just getting in the way, you can, you know, throw a strike through through that to kind of get that out of you out of the way of your mind. All right. Third question for this uh section.
So using an integrated model delivery method, what can the owner expect from the architect?
This is a single choice, multi- multiple choice question, so it's just one answer. This is again something that you can find reference to in the um the handbook about project delivery methods. All right, I'm gonna throw someone at it, Anna, how do you feel on this question?
Um, this one was a little harder for me just cuz of the wording, sometimes I get a little caught on things. I was thinking maybe the fourth one. But I'm not sure, so.
Sure, let's go ahead and look through it and got it.
That's right.
And I think. Uh there's a a little bit, I I think this the language is a little bit too strong and some of these other answers. That is potentially putting the architect in a dangerous position, uh to s- to say that our work would be free of errors would be foolish. Yes, uh same thing with guaranteeing any quality, uh it's it's not our responsibility to define that.
See anything, yeah.
Um and so a little bit more information there, so it it this is about aligning with that standard of care that is in our contracts. And not having unreasonable expectations that are given to the owner. All right, next section, we're gonna dive into finances, risk and development of practice. So this is a little bit more about firm organization and all that, so uh about. How running and developing a practice requires attention to finances, mitigating risk and liability and negotiating services and contracts. Largest section within the pro- the PCM division, uh so you'll need to evaluate the financial well-being of the practice. Uh identify practice policies and methodologies for risk, legal exposure and resolutions to those. Select and apply practice strategies for a given business situation and policy. And, oh, sorry, it's those three. Um, then, so a lot of these might come up in the, say, case studies as sort of evaluating, uh, staff reports and, um, RFPs, project cost and things like that, and legalese with that. So for the next question, we're gonna look at, uh, this is essentially utilization of an architect. And we're gonna say office leadership at this firm is performing an evaluation of the efficiency of their office and overall effectiveness of each employee. Based on the information provided, what is the utilization rate of architect A? So we, we, uh, we talked about this a little bit earlier. So go ahead and take a minute to kind of add up what you need to and do a little bit of the math and we should get a, you'll know that's a percentage number that they're looking for here, not a not a decimal, it's, you're looking for a whole percentage number because of the unit that they're giving you here. Any thoughts here yet? The kind of questions that may seem intimidating when you need to pull out the calculator, but you still shouldn't need to spend more than, let's say, a minute on this kind of question on the test, uh, from a time management kind of perspective. Cause you type Jacob, I didn't hear it, but I saw it.
Thank you.
Alright, Jacob, would you like to give this one a try?
So on this one, where would you round to on this kind of question? Cause I got ninety-one point two five.
Um, I think it, if that was the answer, I think you would potentially leave that as a decimal point. That being said, I don't believe that is the correct answer here. I think I alluded to it a little bit with the, the math earlier on accident. Uh, so we're looking at eighty percent here. And a little bit looking at the rationale of that, I, I think it's about defining what is considered billable and what is not. And so the top three lines here, these are, you know, projects that this employee is acting as a project manager or is doing active drawing on, I would consider those billable hours. The responding to the RFP, that is before a contract is established and before it is considered billable. This is responding to that proposal and trying to win that work. And so that's actually not considered billable work at the moment. Um, and so it, I'm, I'm assuming that might have been what tripped you up there a little bit, Jacob?
Yep, I included that one.
Yeah, yeah, uh, and they'll, they'll try, they'll try to check you with little things like that, that might not be too obvious. And then again, the firm staffing and, uh, discontinuing education, that would also be overhead. And so it comes out to thirty-two hours of, uh, billable hours over forty hours total, comes out to that eighty percent. Any other questions there? Our next question, uh, a client has requested to use their own design service, services agreement during contract negotiations. Which of the following should the architect ensure that are included in the contract to minimize risk? There's four correct answers here. Um, a general note on these questions is that you need to get all four of these correct. If you get three correct and then have one that is incorrect, uh, there's no credit for the question. There's no partial credit either. Anyone wanna take a stab at this one yet? There's a lot of language to kind of work through with this one.
I can take a go at it.
Sure, sure.
Um, I'm thinking B, completeness of owner furnished information, um, C, uh, D, uh, no, sorry, E and F, I guess, um. So, yeah, second, third, fifth and sixth.
Yep.
And you're spot on there. So a little bit of that, um, you know, I think it's, it would be fine for us to not have a penalty in our contract, uh, for our performance. So I don't think any architect's gonna shy away from that being, uh, not included in the contracts, um, for some of these other ones, the right, right, right to rely on the accuracy and completeness of the owner furnished information. That's, that's important. Uh, we need to make sure that we can rely on the information that the owner is giving us to produce accurate documents. Right to suspend services and terminate the agreement, that wasn't in there, they could potentially hold you to complete a project and you have no way out, uh, which is not reasonable. Uh, the relief of responsibility for construction means, means of methods. Again, they, that is not our work, that is the contractor's work. Uh, if, if we were held responsible for that, then we'd be taking an immense amount of risk that we do not have control over. Uh, and then under consultants much profane, maintain professional liability insurance, that's, uh, that's aga- again protecting us from issues that aren't in our control. Any other thoughts here? We'll move on. Alright, you wanna go through this one, John?
Yeah, so next section is, uh, project delivery methods, practice wide delivery of services. And there's a few objectives on this one, um, this one you'll be looking at how the projects and the context of their impact on the overall running of a practice. And it's also good to like analyze the potential risks and benefits of each of the project delivery methods, like what might be primary drivers in using one based on the client's needs and other aspects. Also, differentiating between, yeah, contract agreements and then estimating their impacts on risks, changes to contracts. And then understanding how that impacts the different delivery options.
Okay, right, that question.
So an architecture firm is expanding into the healthcare market and has been selected to design a new hospital building on a previously undeveloped site. The client requires the design bid build delivery method be used. When preparing the proposal for professional services, which factors should the architect consider? Then this one is check the three of these six options that would be applicable in this case.
Any thoughts on what might be some key words as you're working through this question?
Previously developed site and developed site. And then design bid build.
Yeah, I think those are, are the major parts out of the question to take from. Fef, would you like to try at the answer for that?
Yeah, uh, I think, uh, answers is the capability of the contractor is wrong because it's, uh, again, we're not gonna know until we bid the project. Requirement for a brownfield site assessment is, is one of them, uh, is correct. Level of risk associated with the project, yes. Project schedule, yes. Guarantee maximum price. And, and now it's wrong. And then specialty consultant required is wrong answer.
Let's take a look. So I think, uh, you're, you're close. I, I think the requirement for the, yeah, I think the requirement for a brownfield site assessment isn't necessarily needed because it was stated to be the unde, undeveloped site. So you're, you should be able to assume that it's, uh, it's a good, clean site to work with. To clarify a couple of these, a, as Fef stated, uh, the capabilities of the contractor isn't necessarily a consideration because in the design bid build model, you don't actually know the contractor that you're gonna be using until you see the bids. Uh, and then with the GMP, that is, uh, directly related to the construction manager at risk, um, project delivery method where you will go in with a con, and construction manager who will then bid out to subcontractors and that construction manager will give you what's called a guaranteed maximum price, um, as an agreement at the, once the documents are completed. So that's, that one's specific to that project delivery method. Any other questions here?
Um, with the GMP, is that, it, you know, if that shows up elsewhere in the test in the different contexts, is that always going to be associated with, uh, a, a CM project delivery? There's no other product delivery that that would be associated with.
Off the top of my head, I wanna say yes, but I, I think I'd have to review that a little bit, um. That's how I often work with it. I, I can't say I do a lot of integrated, uh, project of delivery, uh, and things like that, but.
That's, yes, that one's usually associated with the construction manager at risk or construction manager is constructor.
That's one of us, yeah.
Sometimes with design, yeah, design build too, you have a GMP, so.
Sometimes the contract, and, yeah, consider that.
In my experience, it's been that, that the, uh, it's usually associated with the CM, but there are different project types. You could always assign a GMP too.
But the, the important note to take is that it's an agreement on a price prior to selection of, or prior to, um, any action on the construction.
So Brian, one question on this one. Is, uh, do we have the specialty consultant required because it's a healthcare market or?
Yes, I, I think I missed that note. And, and that's likely, uh, with the healthcare market, yes.
And the fact that it's hospital, uh, it, it's, it's gonna have things in it that are pretty common. Now, if you're doing just, uh, a, a certain type of surgical suite or something specific within that hospital, that's when you'll probably have the specialty consultant. But if it's a hospital, uh, and any, uh, healthcare architect or a firm that deals with hel, healthcare should be able to do that project, uh, just on their own.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to even pull up the, the rationale portion, but it's a lot of what we just talked about.
Thank you.
Uh, and yeah, it does detail, a GMP is typically, typically a component of the CM project delivery. But, uh, as we noted, like, that could be, uh, varying occasion. Uh, if, if you're not familiar with this, it's a drag and drop type of question. So you have this bank of answers and these are the areas that you need to drop those into. So you would click and drag those conditions. Quick note on this kind of question, you won't see this in PCM, but in future exams, this might be a graphic bank, or it might just be shapes or building elements. You will be able to right-click on those elements during the test and it will give you a dialogue to enter an angle that you can type in with your number pad. Might be forty-five degrees, fifteen degrees, whatever, uh, so you can actually tweak those graphics a little bit when it comes to. That'll be important in programming and analysis when you got like site layout details, uh, just a note on this type of question. John, if you wanna take it.
Yeah, um, so in this case, uh, an architecture firm has been awarded the following projects on the left there and we're gonna look at which one, which delivery method might be the best based on requirements. So a community center with a simple program, fixed budget and the client's desire for contractor competition. Then a performing arts center with an aggressive schedule and the clients need to know of financial construction costs during the design phase. Um, the adaptive reuse of an existing industrial building, which contains multiple unknown conditions, turning that into studio apartments. So this is, yeah, when you would start dragging these three projects on the left into these boxes that correspond to the delivery method on the right. So if you wanna take a look at some of those requirements and think about which delivery method might be the best. So if you wanna take a look at some of those requirements and think about which delivery method might be the best. Zayman wanna give a shot at that one?
I think I'm gonna call on Jacob this time.
Alright, so I feel like. For the community center, that'd be design bid build. That's gonna allow you the most for that, the contractor bids. Then I feel like the performing arts center. Or we switch that one real quick, feel like the adaptive reuse would go under cost plus fixed fee. And then. Feel like the performing arts center would be the C M as the constructor?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. I think I had them flipped in my head, for those last two, but yeah. But.
Jacob, do you wanna give like a quick reasoning of why you picked those answers?
Um, if you're, if the C M is the constructor, they're part of the process, right, from. More, they're more involved as opposed to them being the agent. Um, and then for the cost plus fixed fee, you're anticipating additional costs for those unknowns.
That's right, yeah, like it'd be like any type of existing building where until the contractor uncovers. Finished and everything, you might not know. What to expect and there might be additional costs that they might need to, you know, modify the structure or.
Yep.
Make repairs, yeah.
And then the design bid is just, those are like, that's the most standard typical, you put it out there and you allow all of them to put a bid out there.
Yeah, like you said, it just, it generates the most competition. But I think, I believe it noted in there, yeah, the construction manager is agent delivery method. It it gives the owner consulting, but it's, it doesn't give you final construction. Cost and such, and so that wouldn't necessarily apply to any of these.
Could you quickly go back to the original question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So quick thing for me that the way that I'm, you know, looking at these delivery methods, project delivery methods is like. If it's a fixed. A fee project like for like schools or it's always designed bid built, so you can get a better. Uh, pricing for. For the project, if it's an unknown scope of work, it's definitely cost plus fixed fee. And if the owner needs some help managing the project. And it's either a C M risk or a C M agent or or a construction manager, constructor, C M C. If we wanna like more. More information about pricing, it's definitely construction manager as a constructor. So that's how. To me, it's like how I. Retain the information about. Delivery method.
The, real quick, the C M. The agent, he's just, they would just theoretically, they're going to consult on like the best ways to go about doing it, right? And they're not gonna get completely involved. In pricing.
Correct, there there could be a future agreement that the C M agent becomes the C M constructor, constructor. Uh, but yes, as just the agent, it is a consulting position. And not, uh, not applied to the construction. And. I'll just do a a quick personal note for a Fife, what you were saying about the. Design bid build and construction manager, I actually work a lot in schools, K through twelve through Ohio. A lot of it is publicly funded through the state of Ohio and. They used to be all design bid build projects and they're actually. Going more toward C M constructor projects and it's, they have a. The states develop trust with a range of construction managers and. That project delivery method does still allow a degree of competition because the construction manager will. Bid out to subcontractors and they say they will be able to still drive a competitive price with their subcontractors. But it allows the C M to be part of the conversation through the design phase and to work through that. As well, rather than just. Full design, go to bid, full build. So it, things can be a little bit flexible with. What is preferred depending on the owner and the situation, but yeah. I think in general, your your rules of thumb are pretty spot on.
Can I ask another question really quick? So in the performing arts center description that brings you to C M constructor versus agent? Is. The. Construction cost during design.
During the design phase specifically.
Oh, okay, so because it's during the design phase, the agent wouldn't be. Involved in. You know, assembling a, you know. Cause we're talking about a GMP in this case, right?
Potentially, but not.
Potentially.
Not necessarily, though, yeah.
But yeah, at that, at that point, the C M constructor would be putting together the schedule. Uh, this one also has the note of the aggressive schedule and they'll be aligning that with estimates throughout the design.
And the agent wouldn't be. Uh, yeah. I guess it feels like a little bit of a blurry line between the two.
I can see that, and some of that is, you know, because, you know, sometimes they are the same entity, it's just at different points in the project. Um, I think. Their explanation at least goes on to just say, talk about how the. C M agent can provide the owner with early construction consulting, but does not provide a final construction cost during the design phase. Is there reasoning for that? Yeah.
Thank you.
There's also a few other project delivery methods we didn't mention, there's the C M as advisor. Which, um, it's more like when. Risk and like quality are driving factors. Or the design. And there's also the two types of like design build delivery methods. Where there's the standard one where it's either. Architect led or contractor led design build and. They, they have different responsibilities in that case, and then there's also designed build with bridging. Which. Is when. My, the architect might takes the. Documents up to the construction documents up to the. Design development phase and then after that, the contractor. Or should be more involved in like starting to estimate costs from then on.
And actually producing like the construction documents and permanent information, yeah.
It's the final ones.
Alright.
Yeah.
Let's keep moving. Right, last, we've got practice methodologies. And so with that, it's. Need to analyze how a practice is structured to achieve its goals and how to coordinate. Various projects and services within a practice, the ser- the this section is the smallest of the four in the PCM division. Our objectives are to analyze the impact of practice methodologies relative to structure and organization of the practice. And to evaluate design coordination and documentation methodology methodologies for the practice. Yeah, we'll, we'll get into more detail later about resources. So going diving right into a question here. We've got two architects are forming a new architectural design firm and need to choose a business entity. One architect anticipates bringing several existing clients while the other architect is leaving a larger firm and is unable to bring clients. They will initially only conduct business in one state. And have no plans to add any additional employees, the architects. Would like to protect their personal assets and maximize their tax benefits. Which legal entity would the architects establish for their practice? This one's really just gonna be, you know, understanding. What these different entities are and this should be a pretty. Quick hit question to kinda nail it and move on.
Saying that, if you're not familiar with this and haven't looked into any of the. Re- resources or if you don't know anything about. Limited liability partnerships or general partnerships, you know. Just. Take a stab at it, but. The, 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 the thing that this is, these sample questions are meant to kind of. Give you the broad brush, what these. What, what types of questions you'll get on the exam. Don't ever look at anything for the first time and be intimidated by it. There's plenty of material out there to read and get through and plenty of people to ask questions. That can can help you if there are questions about this particular item. So who wants to give it a try?
Would it be a limited liability partnership?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe so, yeah. So I. I believe a key point of this is. Protecting their personal assets. That was defined there, and so that's a big part of the LLP. Let's see.
And maximize tax benefits.
Correct, yes, a sole proprietorship and a general partnership don't provide liability protection for personal assets. And then the sub C corporations protect stockholders' personal assets and both the corporation and the stockholders pay federal taxes. So there's lower tax benefits with the the sub C. Alright, next question, we've got a small architecture firm that specializes in educational and recreational facilities. Is developing a new quality control policy. Which of the following should the policy? Require to manage the quality of project documentation? Check three that apply. Often with these multiple item questions, you might find yourself. Convincing yourself of why an answer might work, often a lot of these might have merit. And what your job is to do is to. Eliminate. The least correct answers. All of them may be correct in some way, but you're looking for the most correct conditions. Anna, would you like to try answering this one?
I think possibly A is what I was thinking and then. And then. The third one I was having trouble with, but I was thinking maybe. D with that, I'm not sure.
Like. Like we had, I think you had E and D.
So, yeah, B B.
Yeah, and so B for the third one in, and so a little bit on what's going on with this one, so the. I think the first one with the. Library of standard details is that, you know, standard details always need to be adjusted, updated. That they're a good resource to start with, but they're not always foolproof, yeah, go ahead.
So real quick with that question, so we. Not trying not to read too much into the question then. Cause I don't, I don't know, I started relooking at that and started thinking to myself, okay, well, does that mean like little components of the detail? Which I could see being an answer, you know, you start with something, right? And you've been, like you said, you build off of it, but you start with like generally the relatable details.
Right, and. Yeah, I I think. It's, it's easy to read into these a little bit too much sometimes, and so you're, you're big, you can kind of. Go through the question, doesn't matter that there's a small firm, it doesn't matter what their specialization is. So much and we're looking at. You know, just creating a, a efficient quality control policy. And so I think the. Um, run through the rationale that we have here, so the. Professional practice book discusses this and so this will come from there with more detail. It's always a great idea for the team to meet at completion of each phase to run through. Opportunities of improvement and keeping things moving forward. And lessons learned, um, third party document review is always. Great to get another eye on the project that may not have been familiar with it from the start.
Yeah, I feel like you're like. If the project team is constantly looking at the, their drawings, you know, it might be helpful to have someone else in the firm. Take a look to get another eye on it and they might see some items that are missing, so it's helpful, yeah.
Yeah, and so the. The deliverables checklist, uh, in a similar sense, it just gives you. Those items to run through that. Are easy to get lost in the design phases and so it's, it's a constant checklist to refer back to, I think that would be more. Uh, effective as a sort of firm standard as opposed to individual details. And then, so the lead checklist that is project specific, not every project's gonna be lead. Uh, sustainability items in your deliverables checklist might be a good idea to have to, to check on, but. Lead isn't always a part of every project. And then the standard detail library may improve efficiency and the quality, but it has limitations from project to project where. Uh, I'm sure we all have standard details that we work with, but it's very rare that I will take that detail. One for one and use it exactly as it came from our standard library, it it needs to be. Adapted and reviewed on a project per project basis.
Think another one, the first answer, why? It might not be correct is just the. Way it's worded, because it says all of the construction details, that's kinda. Saying, you know, there might be other details that they might wanna use, I don't think every single one of them. Yeah, so it's like thinking of like words like always or never.
Yeah, absolutes are usually not a good thing to follow, yeah. Another note with that, it says, you know, as it mentions here, this is certainly a good thing to have. It can absolutely improve efficiency and consistency between your projects. But from a quality control perspective. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have as good of an impact as some of these other items. Alright, those are the questions and things that we have for today. Alright, those are the questions and things that we have for today. We can, we're gonna run through some of the resources that we have for you all shortly. Before we move on to that, are there any specific questions that we have about any of the questions that we've run through? Uh, or any details with that? So I've really just got this slide here for this one, but we'll just talk through it a bit. So the. Resource library that I mentioned previously, so this is just a, a Google Sheets document and. You can compare this to the reference matrix that NCARP gives you in the guidelines. Um, so we've got. So you know, your AIA documents right here, we, we've got a link that goes, jumps to that website that I pulled up earlier. Uh, and so that's your resource there and. So that'll give you all your contracts. Those are, those samples are free. Uh, the second one here is the book of professional handbook, uh, book of professional practice. Uh, we've got a link to where you can directly purchase that from Wiley if you feel the need. Uh, it is a little costly. There's a good chance that firms that you work with already have this, or as we mentioned. We have it uh, at AIA Cincinnati's offices and it is also available at the public library. Maybe available at other public libraries or other resources, but we haven't necessarily looked that far. Um, and with each of these resources, we give a, a bit of a. Personal insight that we've had from the early professionals group with AIA Cincinnati, uh, we kind of. All collaborated on this list to define priorities on. Where they should lie and your study practices and a little bit of thoughts on how those work. So. Along with that, we've got a few other items like. The um, these were the ballot, the Brightwood books before they uh. Merged with ballast. Somewhere in there, but now there, there's a very large collection, PPI, Brightwood and Ballast combined. Um, so we have some of those older versions, it's still ARI five point O. Uh, they just reorganized things a bit. The, the PPI stuff that is also available at AIA Cincinnati's library. Right now, we have that as a physical asset. You are welcome to connect with us or Julie Carpenter and. Work with her on uh, checking those resources out. Uh, I think we have a standard form. That should go with that and she'll be able to help you through that. And then still, we still work, have links to even free resources like. NCARP guidelines, just general references and things like that. And. Again, right now we have these organized by our study preference for them. And but you can also categorize them by, um, I think exam to degree. And a few other details. And along with this, we have a second tab that kind of jumps into. Third party resources that aren't necessarily on that reference list that can greatly help you in studying. And so. Um, one of the ones that we talked about today. I swear it was on here. Where are those lectures?
The Schiff Harden lectures.
Did I miss it? Yeah. Well, we need to get that on here. I think we previously had a link to them.
Yes.
Um, we'll make sure, actually, they might be in here. Cause I know we had that as a number one priority. Close to it. There they are.
Yeah.
Number two priority lectures for PCM PJM. So this will. They're commonly known as the Schiff Harden lectures. The, the professor, his name is Michael Hanahan. He was previously worked at Schiff Harden. He now works at Perkins.
And he's an architect.
Yeah, yeah, I believe he's an architect and a construction lawyer. I think he holds two hats. But you can go to his page here. Uh, it's his, it's firm's page that hosts it. And then so this is a professional practice course at. You can go to view presentations and so he's got the audio files for all of these and the presentation slides to go with them. Um, I believe the presentation slides have the relevant portions of the contract. If you'd rather look at that, then try to go through. AIA's sample contracts, uh, but so like D one O one. Right here, A two O one. These are your major ones to get through and then it's got, you know, general other items as well. So. The, these are deep dives into those contracts. This is a two part, this is two, two full. Uh, lecture classes, so it's probably almost two hours worth of content just in the A two O one. But they are extremely valuable and I promise you, you will understand them better for it. Yeah, back, back to the third party resources. We've just got links to all sorts of different. Uh, study softwares, uh, programs, guides that are out there. Uh, you may be familiar with Black Spectacles or Designer Hacks and. Things like that. A lot of these do have our, a subscription service, but they uh, do have their benefits. I think a couple, one or two of them are free or at least have free aspects. Like Designer Hacks, I think has some free quizzes that you can do. Yeah, um, and then. So those are some of the materials that we offered, some of the, and then we'll point you in the right directions for things. Uh, you can check that stuff out. We're working with having. Getting digital resources set up that we can easily share and check out. There's a little bit of more of a. Red tape that we have to work through as far as copyright details with that and getting that set up properly, but we are. Uh, collaborating with AIA Ohio on that and because they also. Are working through putting together a larger library and so we can potentially connect with them and just have it be a statewide library. Uh, in that case. We'll keep going through these at least as long as we get through each division of the exam and then we may look at um. Potential focused sessions on, you know, maybe having a uh. Construction lawyer uh, involved in this, so we can discuss contracts in further detail or. A structural engineer that may be able to run through equations with us and talk through, talk through that. So there are more of these sessions to come. We'll typically try to keep them last Saturday of the month. As a quick yes or no, does this time work out for people? I think our first session was. One to three PM in the afternoon on a Saturday. We started a little bit earlier today. Gives you. Not quite in the middle of your day.
I liked it.
Okay.
I like it too. And we'll make the time if we wanna do it, so.
Alright, alright. And then outside of this and the website and such, feel free to reach out to any of us. You can, if our contact information isn't readily available on the AIA Cincinnati website. Uh, you can always talk to Julie Carpenter. And we'll, we'll be able to work through anything with you as needed and we'll help you out. I think if you go to. Yeah, we have our early professionals page that has. Some of our contacts, a lot of. Links to other things that you can help you out. Resources. Yeah, and if you're, if you're not familiar, there are some degrees of funding assistance that you can apply for. Uh, whether it be for study materials or uh, to pay for. Divisions of the exam. So I would encourage you to take a look through some of this stuff on the website as well. Um, I know specifically the AIA Ohio cares grant. I think you can do uh, two hundred dollars.
If you're.
A year, if you're a member, uh, but I do know that that is coming out of a. Fixed bucket of money. So it is there, it recycles every year, but once it's gone, it's gone. So, uh, and that's, that's open to anyone who's eligible to test. So go for it. Alright, do y'all have any other questions for today?
Eric, you had a question about where to get the contract documents?
I think, um. I know Darian said that she had uh, something easy to grab. Uh, I'm actually not gonna be available for the next few weeks. Um, so I will, I will get you Darian's information. It doesn't look like it's. On here directly, but she is, she's the chair of the EP group this year. Uh, and she should be able to get those to you and we can. Uh, would everyone here like a copy of those? Okay, I will make a note of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I think they're available on the NCARP website.
So we, we talked about that a little bit earlier, Paul. AIA has changed their setup.
Yeah.
Um, so they, they've started using, so NCARP directs you to this page. And where it, it nicely breaks them up into the categories. So this is AIA's page, but once you click into these. It directs you to their new system as of, I think it was the end of last year through powered by Katina. It directs you to try to purchase them. Do not buy them. This is the only format that we can view the samples in. Which is okay for a quick reference, but I think what frustrates me the most is that. There's not even page navigation. I don't even know how, how many pages this thing is. Luckily, this one's only eight. But there are some of them that are much longer and there's no way to say like, I wanna go jump to page six of eight. Um, and you know, yes, I can do a larger screen, but and there's no way to print this. I actually. Uh, reached out to AIA about this and expressed my concerns with it and.
Thanks.
They said, yeah, you can. Say, open image and print this image. It's like, that is not an acceptable answer uh, for a document that's multiple pages.
Right.
But we, so we will, we will get you guys uh, PDF versions of this, uh, and it is still the tw- twenty seventeen version. Of these documents, uh, so it's, it's still up to date. But this, this is where NCARP sends you if you do wanna reference that.
I think the only other thing that I've mentioned um, to this group is that. The practice management and the project management uh, sections kind of go hand in hand. And so if you run through practice management, get comfortable with that. And you wanna pass the exam, I would suggest quickly running through the uh. Project management. Section just because it talks about things. It'll talk about all the contracts again. It'll talk about how to. Do the resources and um, stuff like that again. But the way that it talks about it, it talks about it in a, in a project sense and then it talks about it in the practice. Set, the firm set. So there's a slight wants between the two. Through both of them, we'll just deepen your um, knowledge of both and kind of help you as you're reading through the questions. As you're reading through the questions in the practice management, you kind of just keep saying to yourself, is this a practice? Is it a firm thing? Or is this a project management kind of thing? So.
Yeah, very, very similar content. It's just a different lens at which you're looking at it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so looking at the NCARP guidelines, you see the reference matrix in there. The handbook of professional practice is highlighted as a primary resource for both of those exams. Uh, and they have some similar other resources there as well. Um, I think they, they make a point to say that they reference. Quite a few more contracts in PJM. Um, but similar, similar content throughout. Alright, I will follow up some emails to that. Do you have something else, John?
Oh, I was just gonna say, thanks everyone for joining and we'll hope to see you on the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, real quick, I just wanted to check. Okay, I do have all your emails. Uh, Julie gave us all that, so I will share that information. Alright. Thank you all. You have a great weekend.
Thank you too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.